I'm calling an order, the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee of Act 1213, 2011. Alderman and take your please call the roll.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
I'm here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Shaki.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Lazaro.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
I declare a coram. I make a motion to approve minutes dated September 22nd, 2011. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation amending Chapter 4 of the municipal code for business licenses. Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This issue was brought to our attention initially by the Police Department and the Wooddale Fire Protection District. And it results from some issues they've had in the past, finding it very difficult to obtain keyholder information for businesses that currently are exempt from attaining business licenses from the city. It creates health and safety concerns when they're unable to contact the business owners in the event of an emergency situation. And then we've also had a few other issues, you know, with the Police Department with some of the occupancies and the services that they've been offering. Currently, City of Wooddale has exempted all businesses that are required to be licensed by the state from getting a business license. And though it's been told to me by several staff member that it is in the municipal code, I cannot find that in the municipal code. So I have to assume that it was in the code at one point in time, but possibly in, you know, some of the more recent versions of the code. It may have been deleted for some reason or taken out. But the bottom line is, the decision that we need to make here is, do we want all businesses that operate in Wooddale to be required to get a business license? The businesses that are currently exempt, what I will do is put a reference in here referencing that section of the municipal code that has a fee structure, that would be 4.206. They would pay the same fee structure as all the other businesses. And again, this is mainly going to impact doctors, dentists, attorneys, real estate offices, hair salons, nail salons, those type of businesses that are required to be licensed by the state. What we do, even though this looks like a lot of pages that we're adding, these new code sections that are in here, these go into more detail describing what is actually on the business license application. In other words, we're just clarifying in this revision to the ordinance what type of information a business is required to have ready to supply to us when they fill out the business license. None of these are necessarily new requirements. If you were to read a business license application, which actually I should have included one in the packet, I apologize for that, all of these items that are listed in this ordinance are contained on there, and that's information that a business owner is required to submit to us. So at this time, staff is not recommending requirements for the landlords to get involved, requiring tenants, notifying them that they need to apply for a business license. We are not worried at this point about including a requirement to have a Knox box installed. The building code currently does not contain a requirement for Knox box installations. Alderman E. Wesley questioned that last time we would discuss this, but there is not a requirement in the building code. There are some businesses that have been, and I assume will continue to be resistant to putting on a Knox box, such as jewelry stores, perhaps drugstores, those types of operations. And for those of you that might not know, a Knox box is a heavy steel box that's mounted to a building, has a special key that police and fire have a key to, and inside that Knox box are contained all the keys for that business. The fire department likes to have those because in the event of an emergency, they can go to the Knox box, open it up, they get a key, they open the door, they go in. If there's not a Knox box at that location, they open the door with an axe. So what we would like to do is maybe revisit this installation, and when we adopt the revisions to our local building code, we consider putting the Knox box requirement in there. But short term, what our focus is, if you find this acceptable, we'd like to get this amendment to the code adopted prior to distribution of this year's business license applications. Those are due to go out by the end of the month, so, you know, we would like to get this, some kind of a decision on this.
And, Mr. Forrest, can you give the range of what business licenses run in the City of Wooddale? Like from X amount to, minimum to maximum?
Yeah, they're based on square footage, and they can be as little as $35, 75, 80, maybe $100 for your typical smaller business or office building.
So that's what we're looking at here with this subset of businesses, anywhere from 30 to 100?
Correct. And I mean, it will generate some revenues for the city, but, you know, don't take me wrong, I mean, at this point, we're more concerned about the life safety aspect of knowing who's in the business, how do we contact them if we need to, and what are you going to be doing in the business? That, again, is an important function of the business license application. We require a cover letter from a business describing to us exactly what they do there. And if at some point in time it's discovered either by our inspectors or the Police Department that they said they're going to be doing X and they're doing Z, you know, then we have some supporting evidence.
And we've had that a few times.
Correct.
At least. Alderman Coles?
I believe that we should have, everybody should, anybody that's in business in Wooddale should have a business license. Because then that gives us a little control by the Police Department of who to notify. I mean, if you have a thing called Mary's Hairdressing, he don't know who Mary is. And there's a lot of Marys in the telephone book, so it would have given him a chance to at least have a, look up the license and at least he's got a name that he could go after. So I believe that should have, everybody should have a license. Even though you have, even though you may have a state or a county license, he still should have a business license in Wooddale because that's where he's doing his business. And Knox boxes, they're putting them in Bensonville all over. I got one on the building that I have my business in, and my keys are in it, so, just in case of a fire. So that should be put in the municipal code too. Thank you.
Alderman Lazaro?
John, the Knox boxes, who's responsible for purchasing these, and what do they typically cost?
The quick answer would be the landlord or the tenant. But again, as that is not on the agenda tonight, we could discuss that at a future, future time.
Do we have a typical cost of a little Knox box?
I don't know.
Alderman Woods?
John, why aren't we coming with the whole package? Why didn't we put the Knox box in, or whatever other the future, instead of the note saying that we'll come back after it, you know, at a later date?
That is something that we would, had planned on including in the revised building code when we bring that to you, which I hoped would be the end of this month. It may not be till next month, but that would be really the time to put that in there. Our concern right now with this, and this did come up kind of quickly, but again, it's, we're, the city clerk is anxiously waiting for a decision on this because it is time to send out the renewal notices for the business licenses. And we would like to get this out.
Okay. From the building department's side, do we, what do we do with tradespeople that are state licensed? Do they have to get a license in the city?
If they, not if they're a home occupation, but if they open a store on Irving Park or on Wooddale Road and have a storefront, they would have to get a business license.
Well, I'm just kind of asking how we handle that. Let's say they don't live in town, but again, it's the same licensing issue. They have a state license, do we require them to get a contractor's license in Wooddale? Or do we allow their state license to?
Currently, if a contractor that does not live in town is coming into town to do a job, he is required to register with the building department, pay the fee, provide us copies of his license that he is required to have, and also submit a certificate of insurance. That's our contractor's registration.
And I'm in favor of the licensing. I just have an issue with coming back after, at this, making the landlord the babysitter, so to speak. So I know we talked about it last time, and I'll let it go now. But as far as the licensing, I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Mayor?
John, I think you mentioned something the last time. Being that those businesses are exempt right now, this is, it's gone through the attorneys and everything, and there's no, they can't come back and say, you can't do that, right? We're all covered. I don't remember the answer, if we were 100% sure. I think you were checking last night.
Mr. Forrest?
I would say the answer is that the attorneys have written the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley?
John, you mentioned about home businesses, defined home businesses.
Well, typically, a home occupation is somebody with very limited employees, one or possibly two employees. There can be no signage for a home occupation. There cannot be any materials or goods stored at that location. They cannot have delivery trucks making deliveries there. It's your basic, you know, one-man operation, father and son type business.
I think we should really look at that because many years ago, when I started my landscaping business, I was pushed out of a residential area, and I had to go rent space. But now, even with landscapers, there's landscapers opening up businesses all the time, and they're putting their equipment in the garage. You got gas in there, and you got fertilizer in there. You don't know what they have in there. I mean, when I'm going to go buy fertilizer, I'm buying a ton at a time. That's a lot of fertilizer, and then you mix it with gas, get heat in there. You got some problems, but I think they should be licensed too, especially like with anything to do with materials like that. Because of safety, not just for the residents, but for the firemen too.
I would agree on that. That's a good point, that, so are we going to look at home-based businesses, or what are your thoughts?
I expect that will be fairly involved. You know, initially, again, we require the business licenses for businesses that open in a commercial or the industrial district where they're actually renting a space. As far as starting to go after home occupations, that will be a whole other ballgame.
Okay. One step at a time.
I'll bring it up for a future meeting.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Okay, then, I'm going to make a motion to recommend to council the, to adopt the proposed amendment to Chapter 4 of the municipal code revising the existing requirements for business license issuance. Is there a second? Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Ethan Woods Letter of Credit. Mr. Forrest?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. When this memo was prepared earlier this week and put into your packets, I had previously instructed the city attorney to begin the procedures for making withdrawals from the letter of credit. John Kramer and I met. John had, has moved forward getting some quotes to finish the work in Ethan Woods. And the city's attorney, city attorney's office in notifying the bank that we were coming after the letter of credit, magically, there seemed to be a flurry of activity in the last day or two. And this afternoon at 4:15, there was a packet dropped off in my office. And in that packet was a check for the monies that the city has put out of pocket in the amount of $10,944 to pay for the pump repairs and the COMEd and the Nycor bills. In addition to that is a letter. I had some short-term negotiations today with the Bank of Countryside to revise some dates and to increase some amounts. And this letter is a commitment from the developer and the Bank of Countryside to finish the streets in Ethan Woods prior to November 11th of 2011. And subsequently, they are also asking for reduction in the letter of credit. They are willing to use the figures that the city has given them as to what we feel the estimate is to get the work completed. And in addition to that, I also made them include the 10% two-year maintenance bond. So once the improvements are finished, then also the maintenance bond will be covered. So I have that information here. At this point, I would like Mr. Kramer to finish getting the estimate from the contractors to go forward and complete the paving of the streets in case they do not comply to what they're promising to do right now. And other than that, I guess I kind of leave it up to you guys. Do you want to accept their letter? And as I say, they have reimbursed the city now for the money we have spent. We have a letter committing to a certain amount of funds in the letter of credit to finish the improvements, and they do have a date.
Okay, so in the memo, it says recommendation to proceed with withdrawing funds of 287. So we're going to change that because of what happened this afternoon? Or is this specifically what you're looking at recommending?
Well, as I say, it's, this came up pretty quickly, but the letter is signed by one of the senior vice presidents of the Bank of Countryside. I guess our recommendation would be to withdraw the recommendation to withdraw the funds. And we'll continue to, as they say, load our gun, and we'll be ready to go if they do not comply to the schedule that they've given us. At that point, we could move forward.
Okay, so I'm going to consider, right now, I'm going to consider it information only, but I'm going to draw on comments and questions. Alderman Woods?
The letter from the bank, they're guaranteeing the road's going to get done, the bank personally?
By November 11th of 2011. Their initial submittal, they wanted until November 28th. I talked with John Kramer. We both felt that was unreasonable, so we moved it up to November 11th.
And then the letter of reduction to that, when are they asking for that to happen, prior or after?
Well, they would, with the approval of the City of Wooddale, the State Bank of Countryside would like the letter of credit reduced. And again, they use, they are using the figures that Mr. Kramer and Mr. Blecky came up with using 2011 prices as opposed to 2005 prices, which is what the original letter of credit was predicated on. They've agreed to go with our figures. So what we have is a breakdown, figures to do the sidewalk, sod the parkways, install the streetlights, seed the detention pond, and the installation of the trees.
Okay, so, and not to cut you off, but, so what they're asking for is a reduction in that letter of credit as part of acceptance of that offer that they gave you? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. I suppose we could put it that way, yes.
Well, that's the way I'm, that's the way I heard it.
Yes, yes.
So I would have to say that I don't agree with that, because we don't know that they will perform. And they got what they wanted. The end game is achieved. They've reduced their potential losses by X amount.
Right. Yes, we would not, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah. You know, we would not agree, obviously, to lower the letter of credit at minimum until the street is paved.
Okay. I mean, that would be my suggestion, to not do that and write that in there. If they take care of it, everything the way they said they're going to, then I guess I'd be on board with reducing it. But I definitely wouldn't agree to reduce it prior to that. Thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
I heard your recommendation. Do we just continue to keep paying attorney fees for this at our expense? Do we continue to, is someone going to inspect that binder there to make sure that binder is fine? What happens when, if the plants close early because of weather? Do we wait until next year then? I have a lot of questions here.
Mr. Forrest?
Again, I spoke with Mr. Kramer earlier. It would be our intention that city staff would go out, meet with the contractor, go out, assess the existing conditions out there of the base, of the existing curbs and so forth. If there's any repairs that need to be done to the base, that would be part of completing the streets out there, having to do those repairs. Again, we felt that the November 28th date was really pushing it. But again, we feel confident that the plants will still be open, you know, in time for them to complete this by November 11th.
Please follow up.
You missed one question. Do we keep paying the attorney at our expense? Because we've paid the attorney thousands of dollars to sit here and argue with these people at our expense. They're not being charged for it.
How much have we spent on attorney's fees about?
We would have to actually go back through some of the billing, and that's actually a question we would probably have to ask the city attorney about recouping legal fees.
And also, also the staff time that we put into it. I mean, we've put probably at least 100 hours and maybe, maybe John could answer that question. I don't know how many hours we spent on this, but our time too. I mean, John Forrest's time, John Kramer's time, his staff. I mean, it's just ridiculous that we're doing this. I mean, we have to sit there and call up a landscaper to cut the grass. We got to call someone to fix the lift station. That all costs the residents of Wooddale money. So someone should pay for it, and I don't like this last-minute thing. Because I know you've been working on this for a while, and I just keep on asking and asking and asking. And now, now we're getting a last-minute thing, and I really don't care for it.
I don't see the harm in waiting another month, though, if they're going to take action. Mr. Mayor?
John, retention pond, that's going to be the homeowners association, right?
I believe so.
Do they have a homeowners association, or is this another one like Villa Carr? Same thing, we need to get a homeowners association in place here. Because you have one home going in, I don't think that one home's going to take care of the pond all by himself.
No.
That needs to be justified.
Alderman Shaki?
This is October 12th, 13th, and they're saying they're going to finish this by November 11th.
Correct.
Why do they need a reduction in the letter of credit? It's just four weeks away. I don't understand why we should be giving them money back until we see what's actually done. It's been going on for years. You know, one month, what's the difference?
So I believe what you're recommending, Mr. Forrest, is to hold off on reducing the letter of credit until the work is done next month, and then we'll review the situation, correct?
Correct. And again, to address your question, Alderman Shaki, I think that kind of ties into Alderman Woods' question a few moments ago, which I agree with. I don't think we should consider lowering the letter of credit at all until, at the minimum, the street is paved. I would like to continue to, you know, again, Mr. Kramer, I'm not really sure how far along we are getting the estimate to finish the street, but I would like to proceed and have a price ready and a contractor ready to go. If they don't comply with this, at that point, we would still do it. I mean, we could, we still have another committee meeting left in October at the end of the month. I mean, if there has not been any movement by the developer to move forward on this, maybe we'll just pull this back out again. I don't know, Mr. Kramer may have a comment.
Mr. Kramer?
Thank you. Upon Mr. Forrest's request yesterday, I did forward the information that we had set up back in August, Mr. Blecky and myself. We did come up with some quantities for repair at Ethan Woods. We do have all of those individual quantities currently in our road program, except for the small tree replacement that's there and the streetlights. Outside of that, the seating, the sodding, the curb replacement, the binder, surface course is all in our current road program. So I did ask the city engineer at Baxton Rowan to put together a change order for that. And again, if we don't see any movement on this in the next couple days into weeks, we can always come back to the city council and pull the trigger at that time, execute the change order, have our contractor come in and do that expeditiously, and, you know, basically remedy the situation. But again, we'll wait for Mr. Forrest and his, you know, acknowledgement to us once we get that change order back.
Thank you. Alderman Roy Wesley?
If, just stay right there, John. If we, waiting for these people to do something, and they don't, are you, are you going to enter into a contract with a contractor right away to get this done this year? And if they do, say they start and then they stop, are we in, are we in violation of a contract if we sign one?
Mr. Kramer?
Yes?
All I would ask is that, you know, once Mr. Forrest makes the determination, either with city council, the city attorney, that we pull the trigger to execute the change order with our contractor, and once we enter into that, they're expected to do the work. So again, at some point, John is going to come back to the council and say, you know, we're to the point where we still have no answer. They have not lived up to the agreements or the timeline that, you know, that was set up. It's now time to hand this over to our current contractor to get it done. So at some point, that decision would need to be made.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Does a contractor, their contractor, have to come in for permits on this? Do they even have a contractor, do you know? Do they even have a company?
Mr. Forrest?
I don't really know if they have a company lined up, or if they have. They would not need to come in and get additional permits. This would still be part of them finishing the subdivision. And again, the bank is asking that the city council approve this course of action. You know, I don't want to give the impression that staff is necessarily supporting their request, so to speak. The bottom line is, we've been, we started going after the letter of credit to finish these improvements. For whatever reasons, that caused some activity on their side. They have reimbursed us for the money that we've spent. They're requesting that the city give them additional time to move forward on this. I would think we might want to talk to the city attorney and say, if we turn down their request and still the city decides they want to go forward and finish these improvements, what kind of a position would that leave us legally? I mean, if they're saying we're going to do it by such and such a date, and if we just go ahead and do it, regardless of them agreeing to do it, I would like to find out from the city attorney if that would put us in a negotiating place to be able to withdraw the funds.
I have a question for Madam Chairman.
Okay, yes.
The question is, if we don't do a recommendation to council on this, could we, could we just send this to council as whatever it is, until we get the report from PEP on of how much legal fees are? I don't, and then possibly make a decision at council? I don't know that question.
We've gone this far on this whole process, and to wait another month, I don't see the harm in it to see if they're going to complete it or not, regardless of legal fees. I mean, it's already, it's been more than a month. Mr. Mayor?
John, I think this, if I remember right, this letter credits over $700,000 or something. Is that correct?
Six hundred.
Something just came to me. If they don't finish by the 11th, let's say, you know, we couldn't get a contractor, sorry, winter's done, plants are closed, can they come to us, because I know they were coming to us before, to reduce the letter of credit? So will they be able to come to us and reduce the letter of credit without doing any work at all? And then, basically, we're saying this money here, we're only going to keep the 267? Is that going to be allowed? Because then we have something similar with Villa Carr or something. No, we had to give the money, even though we had some questions over here with the homeowners association and whatnot, legally, we had to give the money back. So are we going to have to legally give the money back here if they don't finish the project? They could be stalling us and then come in for a letter of credit reduction. Is that possible?
It's my understanding that they could be entitled to a reduction of the letter of credit, yet the figure would be a figure that the city would of credit, yet the figure would be a figure that the city would set. It's not up to them to set the figure. I mean, we have come up with what we feel the letter of credit would need to be. If the city goes forward to finish the improvements, obviously, the advantage to the bank and the developer to do that is they would probably be able to get a better price from their contractors. But, you know, again, they could come in requesting, they could come in and request it at any time. But, we would not have to reduce it below what we have hard figures for that show it's gonna cost to finish the improvements and have the two-year maintenance bond.
Alderman Woods?
For starters, I don't know if I agree with that whole statement you just made. But, that being said, why don't we just continue to move forward after the line of credit? You can always withdraw it the day they pull up with the truck and keep the pressure on. So, we don't have to wait, you know, for them till the 11th and then start up again going after the letter of credit. Just continue down that path. If they say anything, well, we're just following our course of action. If you do what you said you're gonna do, we'll pull it. Just a matter of calling them and going, okay, we're not doing it, instead of wasting 30 days. That would be my recommendation, to move forward and keep the pressure on. You know, when the pressure came, all of a sudden, they did something. I feel that, you know, they may play the weather card or whatever, so let's just keep the pressure on and try to get it done. Thanks.
What's involved in the process? If we were to continue as Alderman Woods suggested, what's like that next step?
Well, the city attorney, I would have to meet with them, but the way I understand it, the city attorney would just continue working with the bank, and, you know, we would get our contractors, go in and finish the work, and we'd be able to withdraw the funds from the letter of credit.
See, so I'm not clear on what you're suggesting, because it sounds like the next step is have a contractor out there, to me.
Well, we could say the same thing. Our contractor's starting on the 12th. I'm not agreeing to your letter. We're gonna follow the intent of the letter that we sent you, and that's to attach that letter of credit for the sum of whatever it was you guys came up with. And they get there and get it done, or we're gonna be there on the 12th. That gives us something to shoot for, instead of waiting till the 11th and then going, okay, now we, you know, we're kind of somewhat agreeing to that letter, which gives them a little more wiggle room or leverage, so to speak, to play with, and that's the thing that I have issue with. I would rather continue going down the course we're going down. That being said, allowing them that time to get it done.
This seems reasonable. So, to be ready to go on the 12th.
I make that in the form of a motion. Thank you.
And I agree. That's why I think it's prudent that Mr. Kramer continue and get the quotes, get a contractor lined up, so that we'll be ready to move, you know, with a day or two's notice. I agree.
Okay, there, I know others wish to be recognized, but there is a motion to, if you'd like to restate it, to probably pursue the, pulling the letter of credit in for work to be started on the 12th of November. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, then on the question, Alderman Coles?
No, I'm not gonna say nothing.
Okay. Alderman Lozera, did you wish to add anything?
Would that even be possible, to line up somebody for the 12th? I mean, would somebody agree to that in the condition of it might not even happening to them? You know what I'm saying? If Kramer lines up someone on the 12th, and they do it on the 11th, and we say, okay, we don't need you, is that...
It's gonna cost you.
Kramer, you guys can handle that job, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, please.
What we would do is, we would contact our existing street and sidewalk resurfacing program contractor, put together a change order, get his opinion on the change order if he's okay with the quantities and what we were doing. We would wait until after the 11th has passed, come to the next city council meeting, ask for a formal change order from the city council. Once that approved, we would give notice to proceed to the contractor to complete the work. Again, you know, John had put together the 20, or originally, John had gotten a letter from the bank that the 28th, the 11th probably is even a little preemptive or a little too late. We may get some good days the end of November into December, where the asphalt plants may possibly open back up, or you might get a day or two of paving. There's a significant amount of concrete work out there, I think 2,000 square yards of concrete, fair amount of sidewalk. They're gonna have to go in and do curb replacement first before they even attempt to do any paving. They're gonna have to do that curb replacement first. So, if they haven't done anything by the 11th, curb repair, base repair, more than likely, you're gonna know they're not gonna come in and bomb it out on the 11th. Those things aren't gonna happen simultaneously. So, I would think if we have some indication by the end of the month, that the contractor's out there, they're making base repairs, they're breaking out existing curb, forming new curb. Again, once we have those items, I would probably recommend that they install the curb, or install the sidewalk and the curb prior to the resurfacing being done on the street. Otherwise, you're probably gonna tear up a brand-new resurfaced street once they do sidewalks. So, it's kind of the cart before the horse. So, it's kind of tough to answer the question, can a contractor come in on the 12th? Legitimately, sure. We could set up somebody if no action by the 11th. I could have somebody there the 12th. You're gonna need to give them some guarantees, though, and it can't be on the 11th to give them that guarantee.
Okay, so, I'm gonna work to my far right and come down. So, Alderman Roy Wesley, anything else?
I'm looking to make sure that on the 12th, to give approval to the staff, to have the funds available for them to pull the trigger on the 12th if they have to. That's not how you were, John, how you were explaining it, was saying that you're gonna come back to city council, and then there's more time, because we gotta go to committee, and then we gotta go to council again. So, that's how I interpret his, what he was saying.
Mr. Kramer?
The change order would be in excess of $200,000 administratively. I don't believe myself or any staff can authorize that, so that's why we would need to bring that change order to city council.
But it could be brought at the first council meeting in November, right? If we even tabled the matter to them, instead of made the motion. Mr. Kramer?
Well, unfortunately, you're waiting till the 11th to see if they do any work. If that, I mean, if that's the line in the sand that you are drawing for the bank to get work done, it would have to be there after that. Otherwise, giving them to the 11th, you know, you didn't allow them their time. Once we sign with the contractor and the change order, they're gonna want to come in and do the work.
So, is this not gonna work, this approach?
I'm gonna proceed with getting a change order drafted. So, if Mr. Forrest comes to me and says, this is what our plan is. Our plan is to complete it with the city contractor, I have the ability and I have the documents ready. Again, timing-wise, that's up to Mr. Forrest and you folks.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
In return for this, if we really have to, the mayor could call a special meeting for this, too. Correct? Mayor?
I'm sorry, can you restate that?
It says if we need to, we could call a special meeting for this purpose.
Or maybe a phone polling. I'm gonna call Mr. Murmison, back to the mayor. Mr. Murmison?
I think, obviously, they're gonna be doing some work, like Mr. Kramer had said, and getting started out there well in advance of November 11th, correct? So, we'll be able to tell what they're doing. Got a council meeting scheduled for November 3rd. We'll take action on that date if needed. That leaves plenty of time.
That's my thought, too. Mr. Mayor?
So, we can basically table this until the council meeting, November 3rd, and we can, so we don't have to go back to a committee and none of that?
I mean, as the letter states, I mean, they say they're gonna be done by the 11th, so they're gonna have to get started soon, obviously. We'll see how they progress. Mr. Kramer's doing his due diligence, getting everything in line for us to proceed if they're not following their letter. If they don't proceed with what they're supposed to do, we'll take final action on the 3rd and be done with it.
And the sidewalks. If you put the sidewalks in, and then they start building those homes, then they're just gonna rip those sidewalks to shreds. Is that really something we should be putting in? I know we want them, we want the sidewalks, but...
Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, there's gonna be some sidewalks damage in the construction of homes, no doubt. They're probably going to have to replace some, and they're probably have to use some care. But again, sidewalks were intended in the original design. Obviously, some sidewalks are for public. If you look at the design of that dog bone, the two cul-de-sacs, houses aren't gonna be built on one side of it, so there is some public use of the sidewalks. It would be unfortunate if we just made them put in squares at the corners. Probably wouldn't function. So, again, sidewalks, that would be the responsibility of the future building owner.
Alderman Woods?
I'm just, Jeff stole some of what I was gonna say. We're gonna know that those guys are gonna be there, working a week or two weeks ahead of time, and that's why I say keep both of these things on course and keep the pressure on them. Again, with the sidewalks, yeah, it would be nice to do them later, but we'll never get this thing completed. I mean, it'll be 25 years from now before it's ever completed. So, whoever builds a house there is gonna have to bear the burden of replacing a little sidewalk. It's not a big deal in the scope of building a new house. So, I just say, let's continue forward the way we were going.
Mr. Stephan?
If I could make a suggestion, perhaps, maybe the council would entertain the possibility of making a motion tonight, subject to the contractor doing some work and giving the authority to the city manager or public works director, so that you can expedite it. If there is no work, you know, as Alderman Woods is saying, you know, be it the first first week or two in November, then chances are that it's not gonna get done. And at that point, given that authority, pull the letter of credit, and you can move on. So, it would entail making a motion, subject to certain conditions as you choose, and giving the authority to staff.
Mr. Woods?
I like that idea, except for there may be a potential of some legalities involved. I mean, it would be nice to hear back from the city attorney, because it's not gonna be as cut and dry as we think it would be. We'd like it to be that way, but, you know, some things may pass up or pop up, and I would, you know, kind of like to hear about those before we went ahead. I mean, here's the worst-case scenario, is we don't get it done. We've been waiting anyway, you know, but keep the pressure on them, and if all things, if things all go well, I mean, it's gonna be completed by them or us. The end objective is achieved, you know. But, giving the early approval to sign that contract, you know, when some little legality pops up, that could come back to bite us.
Would you wanna amend the motion? Because then it would be reviewed by Bond and Dixon for the council meeting of next week, and then they'd be able to say if it's correct or not, and then change it again.
I'm almost assuming that, because it's gonna come back to us. I mean, those were questions we would have. I mean, they're out there right now, so everybody knows that when you come back, we need to know that it's legally clean to move forward, too, as opposed to, you know, construction schedules and contractors. But, can we legally do it, or do they have the right to come back and sue us, or are there some other potentials? So, I know what you're saying. I don't know if that's necessary to put in this whole motion. Other, you know, maybe for them to bring it back to the next council meeting, whatever that day is.
Maybe we just table it to council next week.
Well, I would say yes, except I think that they need the direction to do what we're doing, because I don't think that they have the right to do it on their own without our approval or direction.
Mr. Murmison?
To me, I don't, I see a need for some direction tonight. Personally, I don't see any council action at the next council meeting. Timing doesn't allow for that. We need to see what's going on in preparation for the November 3rd council meeting. So, if we can get a general consensus on whether or not we're going to give them a chance to proceed on doing it themselves, that would be the only thing we would need tonight, is some direction. If we get that direction, we monitor, Mr. Kramer's doing his due diligence, like I said, and then the next course of action will be on November 3rd, where we pull the trigger to do it ourselves if they're not doing it.
And then that could go straight to council?
On November 3rd.
Is that correct? It would just go straight to your council? Mr. Police. And does that work, Mr. Woods? And then, so I think we're looking, would you like to withdraw your motion? Because there's general consensus to bring it to the 3rd. I think that's what you're saying, right, Mr. Murmison? I can pull them.
Well, what you're saying is you don't require any action from us. You're gonna move ahead.
Just a simple consensus, because there's not gonna be, you know, a motion carried to the council meeting. So, if the consensus is, let's give these guys a chance, we'll move forward with our plan of action.
Okay. I withdraw my motion.
Does a second or a three?
I don't like it, but I will.
Okay. Is there, so, I believe that Alderman Woods has consensus to move forward as such. Any objections on this, Alderman Lozera?
No.
Any objections, Alderman Coles? Any objections, Alderman Shaki? Any objections, Alderman Roy Wesley? Any objections, Mayor Police? Okay.
Not an objection, but just so I understand, after I deposit, or after we deposit the check tomorrow, I will then call them and tell them that the city council will consider, you know, their request based on, you know, actions speak louder than words.
Yeah.
Get going, and that the city council will consider this. But, the city council will not consider a reduction in the letter of credit at the minimum until the street's completed. Is that pretty much where we're going with it?
I think so. Alderman Woods?
Except for the cashing the check part. Cashing the check in part implies that you agree with that at some level?
No, I think it's payment for work already performed by us. So, I think that part's okay. Mr. Murmison?
That's why I called Finance Director Wilson over here. We'll just keep it in a drawer for the time being.
Thank you.
Okay. And Alderman Coles?
We went through this about a year ago. He came down here and asked for...
What? Oh, can you turn, yeah.
He came down here, somebody from Ethan Woods, and asked for a reduction for his credit. And we told him that we'd take $300,000 out of it and give it to him, and he said, no deal. And we just wasted 20 minutes, half hour, going back and forth. We told him it wouldn't, he wouldn't get any money until the thing was complete. We just wasted 20 minutes or half hour of going back, the same thing that we did a year ago, when we told him he had to have the unit completed before we would give him any money back on the letter of credit. And I don't know why we kept going back and forth. We know that, he knows that if it isn't finished, he doesn't get the money. So, I mean, so now he needs the money, or the bank is complaining. So, it's gonna be done now. That's what he said. Now, if it ain't done, he doesn't get the money. So, what's going back and forth? Like, we go back and forth for three-quarters of an hour and don't get anything accomplished than what we started with. So, I wanted to say something a while ago, and I was just bypassed. And so, I'm saying it now. As far as I'm concerned, he don't get anything until the thing is done, and that's the way it should be. And if he doesn't like it, finish the project, and then he gets his money.
I believe that's the approach we're taking. So, I think we're good there. And so... And so I believe we can move on to the next item. Next item is Tioga Trail, the water hookup clarification. So we're going to clarify the drafted ordinance from 2008 on this, and Mr. Forrest?
Yes, what you have before you is, came to us from the city attorney, there was a request from the property owner in the Bensonville Park District to make an amendment to the original agreement. Believe there's four separate PIN numbers on the specific parcel that this individual owns. Her intent has been and always was to donate all four parcels to the Bensonville Park District. She is donating three of the four vacant properties right now, that I guess are in pristine untouched condition as nature habitat. So this is a housekeeping issue as far as there being no tap-on fee or connection fee or annexation fee to the property, so long as they never are developed or transferred away from the Bensonville Park District. Her property, the habitable property with development on it, would be subject to the, whatever annexation costs or recapture agreements are applicable at that time when she transfers that parcel. We're only talking about the three park parcels, and the cleanup of that language.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make a motion, look for a second, and then I'll ask for any questions. So I'm going to make a motion to, to recommend to council the First Amendment to the City of Wooddale Lucy Hubbard Tioga Trail Water Hookup Agreement. Is there a second? Anything else on the question? Anything on the question, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Jeff, on these PIN numbers? Are one of these PIN numbers her house?
Uh, yeah, the PIN number ending in 033, I believe.
And do we, there's no, do you know if there's any agreements on that block with the water line that's running down there?
Yeah, I believe there is. I think that property is subject to it, and that will be subject to it when she donates the property, and there's a change in ownership there. But we're not talking about that PIN number, we're talking about the other three, the vacant land.
You just said that her PIN number's on this, right?
Yeah, her PIN number's on that in reference to, that's the property she's currently living on with a house. That's, we're not amending that part of the agreement. This is for the non-built-out parcels.
Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
To opposition, motion carries. Oh, Mr. Murmiston?
I just want to clarify, Attorney Bond was the impetus behind this. He did receive the request from the Park District, and I'm sure he'll be able to, if you've got in-depth questions, he's more suited to answer that on Thursday night before we officially approve it.
Items to be considered at future meetings, A, City of Wooddale Floodplain Buyout Policy to be discussed at our next committee meeting in October. Item B, Amendments to Local Building Code. And item C, commuter station coffee options in November. Anything else to be added to future meetings? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Would amendment of local building codes come under that home business?
I almost forgot about that.
I didn't.
No, that would be more of a discussion as far as to have that included in the Unified Development Ordinance, formerly known as the zoning code.
So, so are you asking to have that discussion?
Most definitely, I think, is for the safety of the residents for the City of Wooddale.
How many, how many businesses do you think there are in Wooddale that are home-based?
I couldn't even venture a guess.
If I have to count how many landscapers, we probably get about seven.
That run the business out of their, out of their home?
At least seven. And I had, I have a business, I had to get one, so...
Mr. Forrest?
I mean, the, there have been amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance in response to home-based occupations having vehicles and trailers and equipment, you know, where there are certain restrictions on that now, to size and so forth. But again, do people do it? Probably. I mean, we have very thin staff to try and cover the whole town to find these people, because they're typically gone during the day when the inspection staff is on the street.
So you're looking to have something on the books, it might not be easily enforceable to find them?
It's, it's pretty easy. I mean, most landscapers in town have their names on their trucks. It's not that hard.
And then now...
I mean, I've seen, I've seen it, and there, there might be a couple that don't have it. I mean, if you have a dump truck in the front, in the front yard, it's pretty obvious that they're running a business out of it. Or if there's a pickup truck that, that has a name on it, it's pretty obvious they got a business out of it.
Okay, so I think it gets difficult, though, with the home-based businesses like a Mary Kay or a Tupperwarely, you know?
I'm looking more, more as safety issues of anything, construction, paint, automotive, anything that could be, safety. I mean, like I said, you put gas and paint together and...
I don't think you can do that. How would we parse out what's enforceable and what's not, or what would be part of the ordinance? You know, I don't know that we can do that. Safety. Yeah, okay.
Our job here is house safety, welfare of the residents.
Mr. Forrest?
How about if I do this? I'll assemble for one of the next meetings, I'll just assemble an informational-only packet for distribution, and have the home-based occupation sections of, you know, the relevant codes in it for your review, and then at that point, we can figure out a course of action.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
John, this could be done, because maybe 18 years ago, you told me to move, and you were the person.
Oh, goodness, Mr. Forrest?
Okay, we'll discuss this at a later date.
Okay, so we're just going to add it on to future meetings, and then maybe the basis of the discussion would be the listing, and then we'll go from there. How does that sound? Good? Good? We both agree? Okay. Alderman Coles?
You're talking about gasoline? Do you have your gasoline in safety cans? You don't have safety cans, do you? When you have your safety cans on your, you don't have safety cans on your truck when you ride, ride and ride. You have a five-gallon container? You should have safety cans.
I, I only have a two-gallon, and the rest of them is...
It doesn't matter. Two gallons is equal to two ten, two inches of TNT.
Okay, no other items for future meetings? I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to call to order the October 13th meeting of the Finance and Administration Committee. The minute taker show that the same people present, and I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 22nd, 2011. Do I have a second?
I have, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Questions? Motion carries. First item, report and recommendation, the AM Audit Report. Mr. Wilson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had to give Mr. Forrest an extra moment there. Wish him well tomorrow as well. Yes, if you recall, a few months ago, we had AM Audit out to perform a utility tax audit, and they were also going to look at all of our utility bills to determine if we were, for the billing side of it, if we're paying for things we shouldn't be paying for, additional taxes, wrong tariffs, supplier issues, things of that nature. The utility tax audit was where they were going to go through all the cities that are listed as being in the city, and make sure that Combat and Nycor, Comcast, AT&amp;T is appropriately routing those utility taxes to the cities, that Bensonville's not getting them, Madison, maybe nobody's getting them. That part of it has yet to be completed, they are working on that. However, they are complete with an analysis of the city's bills. And just real quick, I kind of went pretty high-level on the memo, it gets kind of technical once you get down into it. For the natural gas, and bear in mind, the potential savings on all these are going to be subject to review on every bill to make sure that we're comparing the right numbers to each other, so it's not, we're just going to take this number as of today and assume that that's going to be the same number for each year. So this, this is kind of a guidepost, but that's not going to be the actual number, because most of these are based upon consumption, so they are going to change. With the natural gas, savings of around $3,900. Apparently, back some years ago, I believe the one was eight, and the other was around 10 to 11 years ago. The city, two were kind of by way of Nycor, and one was by way of the city, entered into agreements with third-party suppliers for natural gas, instead of getting it from Nycor. At the time, that was a good idea. Now, those suppliers are actually charging more than what Nycor is, so we would look to get out of those agreements and pay less for our natural gas than we would with those third-party suppliers. For the telecom, and Mr. Mur...